On behalf of the town of Silver City, I'm calling this meeting of the Silver City Town Council to order. I'd like to invite you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and following that, the salute to the New Mexico State Flag.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible and just as for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the zee symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
These are the ones from the, from the fire department and community development for the unit for the.
I can't hear you.
These are the names for the.
Welcome, everyone, here this evening, and I'd like to acknowledge members of our administration that are here tonight. We have our manager, Alex Brown, our clerk, Alfred Sadio, our business operations manager, Randy Hernandez, town attorney, Charles Credit. We have Chief Patio with us now, tonight. We also have members of the, of the code enforcement here with us is Officer Howdy, is, oh, he's here, is Officer Hernandez, Officer Tony, and is Eli Vasquez here, the fire marshal? No. So I guess that's the town administration. Welcome, everyone. We also welcome members of the public. We're glad you're here to be part of your town, and we also would like to welcome any members of the press that might be here tonight. First on the agenda is item number two, changes to the agenda. Any changes? No changes? Number three is ceremonies, and there are none. Item number four is proclamations. Since November nine through fifteen is National Nurse Practitioner Week, the town would like to recognize this with a proclamation. So I'd like to ask all of those that are here tonight for the proclamation to meet us at the podium, and also members of the council that would like to join us. for decades, and whereas nurse practitioners work to expand healthcare access in communities across our state, promote healthy equity in care, and improve health outcomes for all. Whereas patients depend on the more than 4,000, 431,000 licensed nurse practitioners in the United States to diagnose, manage, and treat their chronic and acute healthcare conditions. And whereas nurse practitioners provide high-quality primary acute and specialty healthcare services while emphasizing health promotion, disease prevention, health education, and counseling partners with patients to improve their health, and whereas the confidence that patients have in nurse practitioners delivered healthcare is evidenced by the more than 1 billion visits made annually to nurse practitioners across the country. And whereas more than five decades of research demonstrates the high quality of healthcare by nurse practitioners, and whereas better utilization of nurse practitioners through modernized state laws and improved policies create better health through a more accessible, efficient, cost-efficient, and high-quality healthcare system, and whereas more than half the nation, including 27 states, the District of Columbia, Guam, and the North and Mariana Islands have adopted full practice authority legislation, offering patients full and direct access to the outstanding care provided by nurse practitioners. And whereas leading governmental and policy entities, including the National Academy of Medicine, National Council of State Boards of Nursing, National Governors Association, and Federal Trade Commission, have taken notice of the benefits and providing patients full and direct access to nurse practitioner, delivered care. And whereas nurse practitioners serve the provider of choice for many and play a pivotal role in the health and welfare of our communities, and is proud to recognize and honor the service of nurse practitioners to our state. Be it resolved, therefore, that I, Mayor Ken Lard, hereby declare November nine through fifteen, 2025, as National Nurse Practitioner Week. Who do we have with us to accept this proclamation? Would you all please come over here? Who's the spokesperson?
I'm Karen DeJaffe.
Oh, Karen, okay, go right ahead and introduce your, your guest.
Pat McIntyre, who's part of the Board of Directors at the, at the hospital, and Al Shaverin, who replaced me at the cancer center.
Okay. Well, welcome. And we, myself and the council members would like to present this for a photo op.
Okay.
And let's get in front of the podium. And would like to ask whoever represents, and I guess that'd be you, Karen, to make a few comments.
Okay. Well, I've been here in Silver City since 1988 from Pennsylvania and have been a nurse practitioner going on 30 years, and this has been the best part of my life. Someone once said, if you love what you do, you don't work a day in your life, and that's how I feel. And I think most of us that do this kind of work feel the same way. I'm Pat McIntyre, and I came down here as a nurse practitioner and then very quickly got hired on at the university. And I'm very pleased to announce that the University Western New Mexico School of Nursing has admitted its first cohort, the Family Nurse Practitioner Program.
Thank you. Anybody else have a comment? No. Okay, well, thank you for being here tonight. Congratulations on this proclamation.
Do we get pizza?
I would also mention that the Chamber of Commerce is having a ribbon-cutting tomorrow, and I think that ribbon-cutting is for a new nurse practitioner office. Do you know anything about that? Thank you for being here. Next on the agenda is item five, council comment. First tonight will be Councilor Ben Como.
Thank you, David. I just want to give a shout out to Jason Lockett. He's in a, I believe he's a department hit with the county. I have received a couple of calls concerning the possibility of having a Covri Corinos bus stop located up near El Refugio, up in Chihuahua Hill. I'm not sure how I got ahold of him, but I gave him a phone call, and apparently he had also spoken with the mayor about getting a couple. He did inform me they were going to put five of them in the county, and he did reassure me that the first one they would put up would be the one at Chihuahua Hill for the women and the children that, that hang out there or need to be there. So I just want to thank him and his crew for doing that.
Thank you. Councilor Snyder.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I just want to, like to remind everyone that early voting is taking place for the local elections, right here in the Grant County Administration Building. And Nick Seibel and the Silver City Daily Press are once again hosting candidate forums in the Bessie Ford Global Resource Center. Tonight is District Four Town Council. Mayor candidates are October 25th, six to eight, and District Two candidates will be October 27th, six through to eight. All forums will be also on Zoom at silvercitydailypressforums.com. I'd like to thank Nick Seibel and the Daily Press for coordinating these forums. I encourage everyone to research the candidates and vote. The last day to vote is on Election Day, November 4th.
Thank you, Councilor Snyder. Councilor Prince.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, I just wanted to cover some of the information I've been able to get from the county regarding last month's property tax increases. That was in the newspaper. I know there was some confusion and the language was jumbled, but broadly, if your home is valued at $100,000, your taxes will be going from $606 annually to 759. If your house is valued at 150,000, you'll be going from 909 to 1,138. And if your home is valued at 200,000, you'll be looking at $1,212 in annual taxes to 1,518, 250,000, 1,516 to 1,898. Don't worry, Clerk Sadio, I wrote all of this down. I'll be sending you that in the email coming after. I hope this clarified some of the concerns and questions for, in my opinion, modest tax increases. I will encourage the public to check in to see if they qualify for tax increment freezes, which, again, are broadly available for those on fixed incomes and veterans. There is so much distance right now between our meetings to effectively cover community thanks and activities, but this last Sunday, I was able to present and stand in for the city over at the Silver Creek Botanical Gardens for their first phase of completion, the new murals that just got finished around the Silver Creek Tank, as well as the new gateway on the west side of the park, and the improvements over to the thicket habitat. Were all incredible to see. I will be a little bit biased because it's in my district, but if you haven't had a chance to go visit in at the Botanic Gardens, they have really been able to get through quite a bit this last year, based on their 2022 master plan, and we look forward greatly to see the rest of their phases move just as wonderfully. Coming up this week, tomorrow, there'll be a workshop at the Grant County Veterans Memorial and Convention Center at 10:00 AM, covering State Capitol Outlay. It'll be hosted by the Grant County Prospectors. It's only scheduled for two hours, and I know folks have to work, but check around for who you know is going to be in attendance, because State Capitol Outlay is how we get access to the state of New Mexico's taxes. While our budget is around about $17 million this year, we're expecting to spend closer to $70 million because of all of the grant programs and state priorities we lobby for. So I expect a very educational workshop for all those involved. Big thank you to the Grant County Prospectors for putting it on. Aside from that, we have a solid agenda tonight, including updates to our 40-year water plan. So for folks in attendance and tuning in, thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you. Councilor Connaught.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank the committee that is putting together the Perros Bravo's and Brewer Hill Oral History Project. This came about after the Silver City Museum did the Chihuahua Hill project. Those of us who live in Perros Bravo's and in Brewer Hill felt that we were just as important. So a group of community members are actually working on this oral history project. They're being led right now by Rosemary and Robert Peru. So if anyone is from that area or grew up in that area and is interested in participating, they should either contact them, or they can contact Javier Marufo, who works at the Silver City Museum. They had an event for the community on Sunday for the, the neighborhood that was very, very well-attended, so there's a lot of interest. Thank you to Councilor Snyder for coming and learning a little bit about my district. I appreciate you being there. So anyone who's interested at all or has stories about families that have lived in that area, please reach out to the people that are, are doing that project. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Operations Manager, Randy Hernandez. He's been serving as kind of the interface between the city and the county in the installation of these bus stops that Councilor Ben Como was talking about. Part of the impetus for that was to put these, some of these bus stops in areas that are sort of on the outlaying part of Silver City, so that not only providing transportation, but providing easy access to the new recreational center. So thank you, Mr. Hernandez, for that. Next on the agenda is six, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on September 23, 2025. Do I hear a motion? Councilor Prince?
I move we approve the minutes of our regular meeting on September 23, 25.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Councilor Snyder?
I have a second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Next is input, and I see that no one signed up for public input, so we'll move on to agenda item eight, reports. And we have a report by our manager, Alex Brown. Mr. Brown?
Mayor, I've got a short report. As you know, we converted to a new billing software in, at the end of last fiscal year. Well, as a result of that, we got, we got behind in our reconciliation because working out all the kinks, and we're finally starting to catch up. And with that, I've identified that we're going to have to have a rate increase in sanitation, sanitation rates. I don't know how much yet because we don't have final numbers. I'll bring that to you at the next council meeting. A big part of the reason that, that we're going to have to raise those rates is because the landfill raised tipping fees by 20% this last fiscal year, and universal waste has a, a cost of living based on the inflation rate, so that's about 3% as well. So I just wanted to give you a heads up that we're going to be doing that, as well as probably slowing down spending until we're, we're sure exactly where we're at.
Okay. Any questions? Mr. Brown?
Me, Larry.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Next is item nine, public hearings, and there are none. Next is 10, unfinished business, and there is none. Next is item 11A, new business, which is the approval slash disapproval of the 40-year water plan update. And I'd like to acknowledge that we also have with us tonight, Mr. David Romero, who will be presenting that, that plan. Mr. Romero, is he joining us?
You ready, Mr. Romero?
Oh, there he is. Okay.
Mayor, can I, can I say something real quick? Dave, one second. I just want to, I want to introduce Dave, because we've actually, I've actually been working with him for the last 20 years on all of our water stuff, and he's done an excellent job. He was a big part, he's, he's done the last three 40-year water plan updates. He, him and his firm completed a water model, which was the reason that, a water model of the upper Miros Basin, which is a big part of why we received those recharge credits out at the airport. And so I, he's, I just want to thank him, because I've worked with him for a long time, and he's done a great job for the town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Alex. It's, it's, it's really been a pleasure working with the town for the past over 20 years. And I can't believe that much time has passed by, actually.
So go ahead, you can make the presentation now.
Can you guys see me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Okay. Can I share my screen? Can you see the front page of the report?
Yes.
Well, basically, the 40-year planning is a process that goes on. Municipalities do it so that they can maintain their water rights with the state engineer And so I'll give a summary of what's in this report. And so for starters here, kind of zoom in the area of the town. The waters for the town is produced partially from Frank's Well Field, partially from the Woodward Well Field, and the Gabby Hayes Well. As you know, water comes into the city's municipal system, and you've also got the four water associations of Pinos Altos, Arenas Valley, Rosedale, and Tyrone. One of the things that we think about when we're doing these 40-year plans is we want to make a projection into the future of your water use, and we want to make that projection out for 40 years, and to see if it, if the wells are going to be able to produce that water in that time. And what we do is we look at water levels in the wells, we look at how they've changed historically, we build a model of the aquifer system, like, like Alex briefly described. And what we can do with that model is we can make a future projection for 40 years, and we can simulate the town of Silver City growth and water use during that period. And we also consider water use by other entities in the area. And when we do that, what we find is it's very practical to be able to produce growth in water use for the town, even when we're considering water use by other entities, even a lot of mining use that currently isn't being used. In our projection, we assume that it would be used. So what we're seeing is that it looks like the aquifer is in good shape for supplying the supply, the, the water supply. So I pointed out where the wells are. As you know, southeast of town, there's the town wastewater treatment plant. And after water runs through the municipal system, of course, it goes to the treatment plant, gets treated, and part of it is discharged into San Vicente Arroyo, and that recharge provides some credit. And that's a permit that you have with the state engineer's office that would allow you to divert that credit from the airport area wells. So moving ahead here, I've got a chart that shows historical water diversions that the town has made through your well fields. This actually, there are records that run back from 1945 to current time. And this is showing a breakdown, the, the blue tones that you see here, the blue bars, that's water that's diverted from Frank's Well Field. Stacked on top of that are gray bars, that's what comes from Woodward Well Field. You also have a single well called the Anderson Well, which is not being used right now, but it was used partially historically. And then you've got the Gabby Hayes Well, which is your best well. So stacking all those color bars on top of each other, we can see the total amount of use that the town has diverted historically. So in the mid-'90s and early 2000s, that's when you were using the most water. You were using anywhere between 2,500 and 3,000 acre feet per year. After 2010, use declined some, and it's been somewhat stable since. So with all the records and information, either records that you keep track of, this is how we can take a look at the total amount of use that's going along, and, and seeing which wells are producing how much. And as I touched on earlier, I'll move here to a graphic that shows, you can see Scott Park, the golf course. Let me just shrink this a little bit. So the water that's discharged into the treatment plant, part of that is used to irrigate Scott Part of that goes to the nearby ranch for irrigation, and the remainder is discharged into, into San Vicente Arroyo. And as that water percolates into the ground, it recharges the aquifer, and the state engineer has given you credit for that return flow to the aquifer. I'll skip ahead here to a graphic that shows the amount of water rights that you have. So in Frank's Well Field, you've got a little over 1,100 acre feet per year of water rights. The Woodward Well Field's got a little, almost 1,600. Gabby Hayes, the lone well, has just about as much as each of the well fields, but the total amount of water rights that you have there are just over 4,500 acre feet per year. If you remember, just a minute ago, I showed what you're actually using at this time is closer to, about 2,250. So you could pump actually up to 40, up to 4,566.64 acre feet per year. And that would be the maximum that you could produce, or that you'd be permit, permitted to, to produce. At the airport area, you have some water rights in the amount of 193. The groundwater credit that you get from the return flow could be up to 747 acre feet per year. But actually, when that was approved, that was at a time when you were discharging more water. But actually, when that was approved, that was at a time when you were discharging more water into the Arroyo than you're discharging now. So one thing that will happen is you consistently keep track of the amount of discharge to the Arroyo. And that's your credit. Now that groundwater credit has a permitted place of use. And the place of use is on this map, covers a really large area. So it's down here near the airport area, you can use it. Water that's produced can go to support water supply for the town of Hurley, for Bayard, for Santa Clara. And you could bring it all the way back into the town of Silver City area. So that's a nice option for planning. And it's water that can be developed in stages in the future. One of the things that we needed to do was to come up with a growth schedule of projected use for the town. So we looked at historical water taps that connected to the system. And at one point, there was a growth rate that was 1.6% per year. And to be mindful of what's happened historically, we considered that to be a possible rate of growth for the future. So that's part of the planning process. Recently, there have been less taps than 1.6%. Recently, it's closer to about half a percent per year. So when we do projections of growth and water use, we look at a high rate and we look at a low rate. So we looked at them both. We looked at the 1.6% and we also looked at the 0.5%. And the projection that we make, we make the high-end projection, we assume that that if we look on this chart, this is your historical use. And then we make a projected growth of 1.6%. And we actually run that in the model that we developed. And the model comes back and tells us that here we're looking at historical use. And if we take that and we project it at a rate of 1.6% per year into the future for 40 years, what we see is that the aquifer in But one thing the town has done is they've updated the 40-year plan every, about every eight years recently. So it's good to do these 40-year plans to make a projection into the future. But after you make that projection, you don't just stop and sit and say, oh, we're good to go. You look at how the system behaves for another five or eight or 10 years. You see if you learn anything new about how much water the aquifer is producing and how much the wells can produce. And you build on that and you make another 40-year projection. But you're always thinking about what's practically happening. And you make your projection, you operate for five, eight, or 10 years. And then any information that you learned, you use in making another 40-year projection. And so that's generally the procedure that you've been following, which is really a good way to do your planning. And one other thing to point out that I mentioned, but I'll talk about a little bit more is when we run that simulation, we're actually looking at water use at all the well fields in the area. We're looking at water use at Bayard, Santa Clara. We're looking at well fields that belong to the mines, Apache wells, Whitewater wells, Stark wells, McCauley, Bolton, Tyrone. We've got all that built into the model so that we're not just looking at the water that's being used by the town. We're trying to plan by characterizing water use by other users in the area too. And that's a good way to plan when you can do that. Basically, we also took a look at, there's been a lot of conservation that the town has been involved with. You have a complete conservation plan that was done by, it was done by another firm. It was done by Dan Stevens. They're very good at that type of work. And I think even part of your new building software was part of conservation. Other things that have come into play are automatic meter reading with radio transmitters. There's a flag that actually will indicate uncharacteristically high diversions in case there's a water leak that comes up. And there's more information in your whole plan or in your whole conservation plan. But I touched on it in this 40-year plan. And there's also information on your website. If you have this plan, you can just click here and go take a look at that. And basically, what we conclude here is that the aquifer is, and your wells look like they're set up to provide a pretty high growth rate of use, 1.6%, that's higher than what you've seen in recent years. And it's nice to see that with the projection that we make, that's and the information that we have thus far, that the 40-year supply looks like it's there. It's there for you. There's also the credit that you have at the airport area wells. And that's water that can be developed in stages in the future. And you've also been very active in water conservation. So in general, that's a very good practice. And that's really kind of the upshot of the 40-year plan.
Thank you. Have any questions or comments from Mr. Brown or any of the other council members? Counselor Prince?
Just a small handful. I have three questions, three comments on this. I just wanted to check in, and I know you're not the state engineer's office. But just when we're looking at figure 14 on page 30, which has the graphs between the usage of Silver City projected and then all other users.
Yeah.
Just from what we were looking at the beginning summary, town of Silver City is, and through our well sites, we're supplying water to 20,000 people broadly in the county here. And we're looking at usage at 4,100 acre feet per year. But then all other users, which is going to be folks outside of our water system, whether they be drilling their own private wells or using industrial or commercial wells outside of our well system, that one's totaling at 9,600 acre feet per year potentially.
See, I couldn't quite hear. Could you possibly move closer to the microphone?
I'll do my best. I'm just wondering for the town of Silver City using 4,100 acre feet per year on figure 14, and then all other users in the county are using 9,600 acre feet per year.
That's correct.
Just want to make sure. The size of those numbers is, in my mind, pretty significant and I think speaks to how much residential users potentially are using versus industrial and commercial entities. So we're using about a third, while all other users are taking up two-thirds of our demand roughly. And then, I wasn't, again, I don't expect this necessarily in the report, but I was just wondering if you could comment on the impact of the mega drought and the kind of lack of snowpack that we're starting to see as far as what those impacts could look like on our aquifer. And with the reviewing of our 40-year water plan, is there any thoughts or any sort of advice that you could give to public and our elected officials here? Just what we need to be keeping an eye on when it comes to the recharge rate and our consumption rates?
Yeah. Good questions. Let me just clarify one thing first about your first question. This is a very long-term projection that we're simulating here. And what we're actually doing is, if you look at figure 12, what we're simulating is all the water use by other water users, including domestic and the mines, just assuming that assuming that everybody's pumping as much water as they're permitted to pump. Okay? So this is kind of, this is a theoretical, interesting projection that helps us understand water supply versus water demand. It would be very uncharacteristic if all of a sudden everybody just started using all their permitted water use. But we ran this just to get a feel for an understanding of how water use would compare to the actual water supply. Okay? So it's actually a projection that runs for hundreds of years. And so it provides some insight to see that, but it's not a substitute for the 40-year planning that's going on. And in terms of what relates to the water supply that's here, figure 15 is a good place to look. So if we look at the left side of it here, this is a pre-development condition. So there have been lots of studies that have been done. We built from studies of others. Fred Schrauber published some work on this back in the 1970s. And John Hawley published some work around year 2000, I think. And those were back in the days when people, they dedicated their whole careers to studying basins. And they did some analysis that helped us understand the amount of recharge that comes into the system. So in general, the recharge, and that's something that's related to precipitation and snow melt, like you were talking about. So this 13,600 acre feet per year is something that we held constant in our simulation. We assumed that that recharge would continue at that rate. There's also an estimate of underflow from the north that comes into this Mangus Trench region. And the estimate of that is about 4,600 acre feet per year. And this 13.6 is an estimate that's based on based on our modeling and based on some analyses done by other. So in a pre-development condition, you've got on this table here, you've got the 4,600 of underflow, the 13,600 of recharge together, that's 18,200 acre feet of recharge that comes into the system. Now that water has to go somewhere. Part of it goes to the Mabriss Basin. And we estimate it's about 9,100 that goes there. About 4,400 shows up at Mangus Creek at the spring. About 2,400 is evapotranspiration. And about 2,300 shows up in the Gila River. So the model that we built of the aquifer system is what helps us figure out how those numbers partition out. Okay? Now, that's the pre-development condition. When we go back to the chart that you first referenced, this is the one that runs out for hundreds of years. So then what happens is the recharge, we didn't change that. We kept that the same. But then what happens is, you see at pre-development, there's 9,100 acre feet that's going to the Mabriss Basin. But after all that groundwater pumping, only 300 flows out of the basin now. Because the groundwater pumping in the basin reduced that. And Mangus Creek now has, instead of 4,400, now it's got 3,300. So when you pump the groundwater, what it does is it captures that recharge and it doesn't leave the basin anymore. So when you look at this table here, there's the flow into the system. The flow out of the system changes because of the groundwater pumping. So that's how we can start to get a concept of how total demand would affect the supply. And if you wanted to do some studies that looked at having less snow melt or less recharge, you could run the same analysis with a projection in the future that would reduce this recharge from 13,600 to maybe something like 12,000, you know, based on a study that you would think through. Hello? Can we hear you guys? Okay. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So this is a really good study for looking at supply and demand in general. The overall outcome of it is something that happens in hundreds of years, so it's way too far out. But we still learn from it in terms of supply and demand. So the thing to do is, I'd say at least every 10 years, eight or 10 years, So the thing to do is, I'd say at least every 10 years, eight or 10 years, update your 40-year plan and look at how your wells are producing. Look at how your water levels are changing. And just make sure you're not seeing any patterns that are anything different than what you've seen in the past and what we're projecting. You know, some of the things that could improve yield for the city would be, some of your Frank's wells are shallow. You could deepen some of those if you needed to get more water. One big thing that the town did, I think it was about six years ago already, was it was a re-drill of the Gabby Hayes Well. That's your best well by far, and that re-drill was a great success. There's a volcanic ash that was studied by Fred Schraeger back in the 70s. He identified that, and that's where the first Gabby Hayes Well was drilled. And we were quite happy that in the re-drill, we hit it as well. So the best thing to do is just keep an eye on how things are operating, look at these projections, and make informed choices as you move forward.
No, I don't have anything.
Thank you so very much, Mr. Romero. I'd like to-
You're absolutely welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Mr. Brown and all of his staff, and all of the previous community members that have worked hard on developing a plan to make sure that we're going to have enough water for our needs in the future, especially this new plan where we have a circuit between all the communities. So everybody will have a chance to meet their water needs. I remember once I was talking with Mr. Brown, and at the time we were talking about this contract we were going to make with Tyrone, I mean with Baird, I think.
Hurley.
But anyway, Hurley, yeah. Mr. Brown made the comment about why we were doing this and why it was important to make sure all of our neighbors would have an opportunity to have their water needs met. And he made a statement, I think is very important. He said, you know, these aren't just people in our area. These are our brothers and our sisters and our uncles and our aunts. These are our family members that we're working with. So, Mr. Brown, I think we owe you a tremendous thank you for the work that you did. And along with you was our previous mayor, James Marshall, and our assistant manager, James Marshall, and the others that worked with you. So once again, thank you for your vision and your foresight into the needs of our communities. Thank you again. Thank you, Mr. Romero.
Can we have it approved or disapproved?
You're certainly welcome.
Counselor Connaught.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve of the 40-year water plan update.
We have a motion to approve the 40-year water plan. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Binkelman?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Counselor Prince?
So just making sure, as we've been seeing very significant changes in the amount of water that's been falling in Grant County, and the amount that we've been having in the safe over the winter months, the eight-to-10-year revision cycle, this will be something that potentially might need to be looked at more frequently. On top of that, just the amount that is being consumed not by residents, not by individuals, not by families, if we're only using a third of it and then the other two-thirds are going for industry, just want to make sure we're acknowledging that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, we have a second.
Yes.
And then we have a roll call, Mr. Sedeen.
Counselor Binkelman?
Aye.
Counselor Prince?
Aye.
Counselor Snyder?
Aye.
Counselor Connaught?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Under Agenda Item 11B is the approval/disapproval of RFP 25-26-6-1P. Mr. Brown?
Mayor of Council, the town received only one RFP bid on the RFP 20/25-1P Legal Services is New Mexico Government Law LLC out of Albuquerque, of which Mr. Kretic works for. So it's staff's recommendation to award the RFP to New Mexico Government Law LLC.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from Mr. Brown? Counselor Prince?
How is the contractor for?
That's to be negotiated up to four years.
Four years?
Up to four years.
Up to four years.
Yes.
Any other? Counselor Snyder?
It's always, was real nice when we had a town attorney. And I realize that we've had no applicants, but I was wondering if we did, for some reason, an applicant came into the town and said, I'd like to apply for the position, is there a method in this RFP that we could terminate it early or anything if we wanted to go that route?
Yes, we would be able to terminate it early if we needed to.
How much warning would we need?
What do you mean?
How much timeframe would they overlap between a new attorney and the-
I don't think it would overlap at all. I mean, if we got an employee-
So it would happen immediately?
Well, 30 days.
30 days?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Connaught?
I move to approve of RFP 25-26-1P Legal Services to be awarded to New Mexico Government Law LLC, 6121 Indian School Road Northeast, Suite 202, Albuquerque, New Mexico, 87110.
Thank you. Is there a second? Counselor Snyder?
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion or comments? Roll call, please, Mr. Sedeen.
Counselor Binkelman?
Aye.
Counselor Prince?
Aye.
Counselor Snyder?
Aye.
Counselor Connaught?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next is Agenda Item 11C, the approval/disapproval of bid 25/26-2 Mill Road Lift Station and Forest Main. This is a rebid. Mr. Brown?
Mayor of Council, this is a bid 25/26-2 Mill Road Lift Station and Forest Main, a rebid. As you remember, the bids that came in, well, the two bids that came in last time were over the funds available. We did receive additional funding from Colonias, and we received one bid from JNS Plumbing in the amount of $1,284,100,000 plus gross receipts taxes. We do have the funds available between the two grants, so it's staff's recommendation to award the project to JNS Plumbing and Heating.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any questions or comments from Mr. Brown? Counselor Prince?
This was the rebid, if I recall correctly. We're looking at originally a $900,000 bid, and we had to increase that, or $900,000 was offered, and we had to increase that to about $1.4 million just a month or two ago.
Yes, we received additional funding, $1.4, so we do have a little bit of funds left over which we're going to use for the electrical work that's going to need to be done from PNA.
Okay, thank you. The only other concern is we had a similar contractor, same contractor. If we could just remind them to not pour concrete into the Arroyo while they're doing the work on it. I remember we had to do some remediation on that on the efforts up on Kane Drive.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Do I hear a motion? Counselor Connaught?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve of bid 25-26-2 Mill Road Lift Station and Forest Main to be awarded to JNS Plumbing and Heating LLC in the amount of $1,388,272.61, including applicable gross receipts tax at 8.125%.
Thank you. Is there a second? Counselor Prince?
Second, the motion is stated.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or comments? Roll call, please, Mr. Sedeen.
Counselor Binkelman?
Aye.
Counselor Prince?
Aye.
Counselor Snyder?
Aye.
Counselor Connaught?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next is Agenda Item 11D, the approval/disapproval of recognizing June 19th as Juneteenth, National Independence Day as a town holiday. And I'll ask Vicki Tony if she will come up and present that request. And I assume you're speaking for the union, ASME Union?
I'm speaking for all of the town employees, not just the union. Yes, the FOP and the Fire Department Union and the ASME Union all have agreed, but we also have spoke to some of the exempt employees as well. And we just feel that implementing the Juneteenth as the town holiday would honor and acknowledge a pivotal moment in American history and provide the town employees with opportunity to participate in civic and cultural observances, strengthen community relationships, and demonstrate the commitment and equality and justice and diversity that the town strives for.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the council? Counselor Prince?
I'll also add, if you want to put in every day that schools have off too, please consider that one, because I know it's been really difficult to get childcare figured out when our calendars aren't lining up. I know we need critical services every day, but please take the time that you guys need. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you so very much. I'll entertain a motion. Do we have a motion? Counselor Connaught?
Sir, may I move to approve of recognizing June 19th, Juneteenth, National Independence Day as a town holiday?
Is there a second? Counselor Binkelman?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please, Mr. Sedeen.
Counselor Binkelman?
Aye.
Counselor Prince?
Aye.
Counselor Snyder?
Aye.
Counselor Connaught?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Next is Agenda Item 11E, the approval/disapproval of Resolution Number 2025-30, a resolution of the Town of Silver City ratifying a certain agreement between the Town of Silver City and the Southwest New Mexico Council of Governments dated October 14, 2025, and authorizing the executive of the same by the proper official of the Town of Silver City. Mr. Brown?
Mayor of Council, this is the annual agreement between the Town of Silver City and the council of governments, who, we all know the council of governments is indispensable for all the grant writing and state well support with all state aid and federal agencies that they supply us with. It's our recommendation that I be appointed as the main member, because I am the vice chair. I have one more meeting, and then Jackie would be my alternate, and once I retire, she would step into my role. And then for the RTPO, which is required for the transportation, Peter Benya would be the primary, and Randy Hernandez would be the alternate for that.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from Mr. Brown? Do I hear a motion? Counselor Binkelman?
I move to approve Resolution Number 2025-30, resolution of the Town of Silver City ratifying a certain agreement between the Town of Silver City and the Southwest New Mexico Council of Governments dated October 14, 2025, and authorizing the executive same by the proper official of the Town of Silver City.
Thank you. Is there a second? Counselor Connaught?
Sir Mayor, I'll second. That motion is stated.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or comments? Roll call, please, Mr. Sedeen.
Counselor Binkelman?
Aye.
Counselor Prince?
Aye.
Counselor Snyder?
Aye.
Counselor Connaught?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next is Agenda Item 11F, the approval/disapproval of Resolution 2025-31, resolution authorizing the Town of Silver City to enter into the design funding agreement amount the State of New Mexico Interstate Commission, the City of Baird, the Village of Santa Clara, and the Town of Silver City. Mr. Brown?
Mayor of Council, as we've talked about in the past, you know, we received that Colonius grant for the construction of the Santa Clara Well that was donated from Freeport-Mack Moran. As I stated earlier, we were going to get the match funds from Interstate Stream Commission, and this is that agreement for the match funds for that construction.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Are there any questions or comments? Counselor Prince?
Just because we have the same meeting with the 40-year water plan, do we have any preliminary estimates or any ideas as far as how much capacity we're going to be able to add to the system by going with the Santa Clara Well?
It's, the Santa Clara Well, it has 250 acre feet that's associated with it.
250.
And that's transferred from Freeport-Mack Moran. So that total, that total 9,700 feet, acre feet in the 40-year water plan that was commercial, this is a piece of that that's going to go into-
The municipal site.
Municipal site.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Do I hear a motion? Counselor Snyder?
I move to approve Resolution 2025-31, resolution authorizing the Town of Silver City to enter into the design funding agreement amount of the State of New Mexico Interstate Commission, the City of Baird, the Village of Santa Clara, and the Town of Silver City.
Thank you. Is there a second? Counselor Prince?
Second, the motion is stated.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or comments? Roll call, please, Mr. Sedeen.
Counselor Binkelman?
Aye.
Counselor Prince?
Aye.
Counselor Snyder?
Aye.
Counselor Connaught?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next is Item 11G, the approval/disapproval of canceling the November 11th and November 25th regular town council meeting and rescheduling one town council meeting on November the Mr. Sedeen, do you want to make any comments? Are we-
Well, we've been discussing regarding the work session that you guys want to have. Looks like on the 28th is the week of Thanksgiving, and the 11th, I forget what the 11th was.
Veterans Day.
Yeah, Veterans Day. And the offices will be closed, so we kind of thought maybe Randy and I, Randy gave me an idea of just going with the 18th and, you know, just having the one meeting in November. As far as a work session, if you want to have that an hour before or something, we can schedule it at that time.
Any questions or comments?
Are we also having a work session on the 28th of October?
Yeah, well, you guys-
Yes, I made that motion.
Yeah, I think Counselor Connaught had made that motion on that.
Good, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
We haven't, we haven't, we haven't had a motion yet. Motion first?
Oh, yes. Counselor Connaught?
Sir Mayor, I move to approve of canceling the November 11th and November 25th regular town council meeting and rescheduling one town council meeting on November 18th with a work session an hour before.
Okay, thank you. Do I hear a motion? Do I, is there a second? Counselor Prince?
Second, the motion is stated.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. This concludes, oh, I'd like to thank all of you for being here this evening and participating in your city government. This concludes the business of the Town of Silver City. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Prince?
I move to adjourn.
Do I have a motion to adjourn? All those in favor?
Aye.
Please adjourn yourselves. Thank you.